A regular, well, our study session. And so I am going to call this meeting to order. Counselor Rudd.
Madam President, I have item eight, eight, it's ready.
Thank you. I have nine and I am going to call it ready, but I'll know Monday. All righty, Counselor Bay. Is he on, James?
I'm not sure, I have not seen him yet. He's usually under Syracuse County Council.
Okay, well.
I don't see him yet.
Okay, so we're gonna go to Counselor Rudd again.
Madam President, item twelve. Frank Leva, are we withdrawing? Do you want this item withdrawn or are we going to deal with this one?
Lead hydraulic steering bill and check for lead.
On the technology, I got a little bit lost there. Yes, we're asking for that to be withdrawn until the city's financial position becomes a little clearer.
Sounds good. I will withdraw that item.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor.
Counselor Bay.
That was perfect timing.
I know, I saw you.
Madam President, I have numbers, item number ten and eleven. Both those items are ready. Not sure if there's any more questions for any of my colleagues who are not a part of the committee meeting, if they have any questions. One, once, twice. I don't have any further questions on these items. And at some point, obviously, I think before Monday, I have some more items. Otherwise, ten and eleven are ready.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President, I have items thirteen through eighteen. Commissioner Robinson, you wanted to start and run through first couple items that are in your department.
Yep. We got the donation of the purification system. I know we touched up on that on the committee meeting. If Cory's on, she can give you a more elaborate explanation, but.
Yeah, I'm on, this is basically a company that is making this a similar offer to the county just in in light of COVID, you know, concern about air filtration and systems. They wanted to donate a system to the city. It's valued at $5,000. They consulted with our building trades to figure out the most appropriate place for it. And so they'll be doing, they'll be installing it at DPW. So, and we verified that this company doesn't have any current or pending business before the city.
Any questions on this item? Item fourteen.
Fourteen is us acquiring four thirty-nine, four forty-one, West Taylor Street. I know, I knew Ian was on to talk about that.
Excuse me for one minute. Somebody needs to mute their phone, please. Hello? We need to mute. Thank you. Go on, Commissioner.
Yep, this property or parcel was part of a condemnation that I know Ian spoke on at our committee meeting. If someone from engineering can elaborate more on that, but that's us taking over that parcel.
Hi, this is Mary Robinson, City Engineer. Yes, this is a parcel that I guess is not big enough to really be a parcel. So we need to acquire it. It's part of the Creek Walk Phase Two project. And I do know that the adjacent neighbor would like to purchase the lot once we require, once we acquire it. There's an attachment, I believe, to the letter, or it was presented at the committee meeting that shows the parcel, which is called an economic remnant.
Okay. Thank you, item fifteen.
And next one is just a waiver. We ran out of, I guess a bill came in a little too high on one of the APOs. And I guess we are tasked with asking for a little bit more money on this next APO to pay for the bills for, I think it was last year, last year that we fixed this, this, this piece, this machinery. So that's, that's a.
Okay, any questions on that item, item fifteen? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Item sixteen is water item, I believe. Commissioner Awald, I'm.
Commissioner Awald, you're on mute if you're trying to talk. Unless you're calling user four.
Cory, do you want to just jump in? I think this one's pretty simple, right?
Yeah, so basically it's, we have the CMS, the Computer Maintenance Management System software that we're working on. And it's looking to amend the amount that we, authorization to amend the amount being paid to GHD, who's the consultant helping us navigate implementing the software. So I believe it's an additional $35,000.
Any questions on this item?
Yeah, what, what are they helping us to implement? Sorry, I wasn't clear on it.
No, that's okay. So there's a, the Water Department is moving forward with a, it's a City Works program. It's a maintenance management software, system software to get a lot of their work orders off of paper, off of notebooks and into a trackable system. So they've been working this year to implement City Works. And GHD has been helping them do a lot of the process mapping and consulting with the staff. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to try and get all the operations into, into a system like this. And so we're just amending the amount that would be paid to GHD. We just need to increase it a bit. There are some delays, some on our part, some on their part, specifically related to COVID as well.
Now Cory, was there, was there a chance to apply for maybe some grant or this, there was no opportunities?
That's a, that's a great question. I was hoping that Joe might be able to speak to that because I know he was looking into it. So let me, Joe, are you? I see you're unmuted now. There you go. Hi, Joe.
All right. All right, it's working now. So, all right, what was the question?
Okay, before you start, Joe, it's a lot of reverberating going on in this phone. So I'm kind of gonna ask everybody again if you're not speaking to mute your phone, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, so what was the question? I didn't hear it because of the background noise, reverb.
The question, the question, Commissioner, was, was there opportunities to apply for grant or wasn't any?
No, this, this endeavor wasn't a grant opportunity project. This is something we're doing to increase our efficiency internally and externally to clients, like people who want new services. We can turn around the paperwork faster and coordinate the efforts with our internal staff. So this isn't a grant, grant funded or potentially grant funded opportunity. This is all in-house funding.
What I'm asking, what I'm asking was, was there, we look or is this we look for opportunities?
Yes, we did. A lot of the program we're doing, the CMS stuff, isn't typically funded by grants. They like to grant funding, like to see more hard infrastructure, construction, building improvements, not typically software improvement.
Okay. All said, Madam President, and Counselor Green.
Any other questions on this item?
Yeah, sorry, just one more, Joe, and I'm sorry I'm late to the party on this one. Commissioner Awald, have we checked that this will be, I know a lot of times with different data collection that we worry about, you know, being able to interact with other systems and other databases going on. Will this be functional and coordinating with other databases?
Yeah, we had a list of other databases we use and some of the stuff that the city uses in general to interact with. We put that in the proposal and that's in the contract to do that. So some of the stuff that we are currently using, like the AS400 is very difficult to interact with. But we are pulling all the information and moving some of our operations out of the AS400 into the new City Works software. So it can be more easily communicate to other software coming in the future.
Great, thanks, that's all I, all I have, thanks, Commissioner Green.
I will just say also, City Works is a, is a known entity and, you know, in a lot of municipalities. And so it'll be, we anticipate water's certainly taking the first step. But, you know, our goal hopefully is to integrate more of our operations, you know, perhaps move to Parks next and DPW to really have a system that can better track our assets, our workflows, kind of what at one time we hoped that IPS might be able to do in it, and it did to some degree. But I think that this has broader implications and, and Joe really put a lot of time into making sure that this wasn't a system that would just work for water and that it was something that, that could, that could be rolled out in other departments as well so that those systems could talk to each other.
Yeah, go ahead, Madam President, sorry.
Okay, I want to ask you a question because I've been around for a while. And every time it comes to these different systems, we continuously come back to the table and say, well, this is gonna interwork with this and that's gonna work with this, but then it turns out it doesn't. So are we actually truly convinced that some of these things are gonna work with the, I mean, we, we just can't keep throwing money into?
I agree, as, as, as one of the staff members who essentially gave birth to IPS, having gone through this process before, you know, that's why I say that City Works is a known entity. It's used in other municipalities our size. IPS, you know, certainly for code enforcement is helpful, but to I think with the process mapping that Joe is doing and doing the outreach to the other departments ahead of time, I think we're in a much better place than IPS. I, I agree with you, President Hudson, I know this has been an issue. But I know, you know, Joe has, has had conversations with our Director of Fleet Operations to see the way in which this not only could apply, but is used in other municipalities. So I mean, whereas IPS, we were their largest client at the time that we rolled it out. I think it was certainly well intentioned, but also these systems evolved. So the technology of 10 years ago is just, you know, City Works, I think, is a, just a very dynamic product and is a known entity in a lot of municipalities our size and much bigger. And so I think by going with someone that has a demonstrated record and seeing how it works in various departments in other municipalities now, not just potentially how it could, how it's being used in other municipalities now, I think puts us in a much better position than we were in the rollout of IPS. And again, as, as I'm one of the, the parents of IPS, and so I certainly understand that it's shortcomings and we're making sure to not make those same mistakes again in this case.
And I understand that, that the technology, and I'm not gonna drag this, but I just want to say that I understand that the technology changes. So shouldn't we kind of line ourselves up with a company that we know they're gonna be able to keep up with? Because I recall that we kept going to Parkion because they were the most innovative and they would keep up and whatever, whatever. And now we're moving past them. So we need to, maybe, I, just me, I'm not a computer IT or whatever person. Maybe we need to have a company that we know that can guarantee us that they'll keep us rolling in the loop as the technology continues to advance because we spend a lot of money on technology, a lot.
President Hudson, this is Frank Caliva. I couldn't agree with you more. And, and just to reiterate what, what Cory and Commissioner Awald have already said, we've recognized this. The project manager that we just brought into the IT department, who's gonna be leading the Kronos implementation, has extensive experience working with large and small companies. She comes from a consulting firm that worked with companies like Disney and others to implement software exactly in the manner that you just described. So ensuring that it's interoperable, that it, it doesn't, it will not end of life too soon and that we'll be able to maximize it. So we're looking to leverage her experience to do exactly what you just described.
So could you?
We haven't been good at it.
Can you hear me a little bit? Can you hear me? Can I get, like, maybe go back five years and tell me what we've actually spent on technology?
We can absolutely do that.
Okay, thanks.
Citywide, certainly.
And, and I just, yes, my question was a long, Madam President, question. So it was, was, was similar minus the, the number of years that spent on the council. So this is a follow-up to that. Can we have a comparison or, or an analysis of, of, of the IPS versus this system that you're putting in as to what are the pros and cons of this?
Counselor, I can just jump in. So IPS, our current asset management system for water doesn't work. I mean, we use a lot of paper. The guys aren't really able to track how it's going. I mean, so I think, I think the, the question Madam President bring up, which is, let's go with the system that's gonna be able to grow with the city and other departments is exactly correct. But it's not as if the current system works. There's no doubt about it. Everyone agrees that we need to evolve, to move into the 19th century, the way we do asset management. So I am glad Commissioner Awald has taken on this project because it's absolutely needed and the current system doesn't work.
And, and, and my, my, my request is just, is just to do an analysis, a visual, a visual of where, where we are and where we are trying to go. That's, that's what I'm asking.
I think, this is Cory again, I think Commissioner Awald can provide, you know, there's a reason why this system was selected. We left, we laid out what it is we want to do, where we want to go, and looked at a number of systems to see which one fit that need. And I think, you know, having an evolving technology and, and keeping up with the processes is one of them. So I'm sure that Commissioner Awald could share that information of how we arrived at City Works as, as what we see as the best solution to our current, our current and future problems.
And, and just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not questioning the intention here. I'm just, I just wanna see the numbers on it. The, you know, the IPS, you know, you, we use paper versus we don't use paper. This system is gonna cast away from paper. There's this, because paper in itself is, is good. I want to also see what else can this system do besides just taking us off, off the papers? And, and so this is a software versus the IPS software. So just do a comparison, just, just like you would if you're buying it. Always tell you why this is better and why you should take this system. That's all I'm asking. And I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, Commissioner Awald is, is the decision to move a better system is a great one. I'm not questioning that. And we should be moving something, but I'm just asking for something to show what is better.
That totally makes sense. We can provide that information. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item seventeen, Commissioner Awald. This is the intermunicipal agreement, I believe.
Joe Awald.
He, he just popped up.
There he goes.
But I missed it.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, good. So just to take one step back, I was trying to jump in conversation there before and I must have been muted. But I can definitely provide that information to Counselor about all the aspects of the software. I just wanted to give a little bit of information that the City Works' parent company is Trimble, which is a $3 billion company and has been around for over 41 years. So it's not a small mom and pop type of shop that could be gone in two years and we're left hanging on the software that'll never be updated. So we have looked at those, that information to make sure we made a decision that can grow with us as, as times change. So with that being said, to item number seventeen, which is our annual contract, the Soil and Water Conservation District for Skinny Atlas Lake watershed ag program.
Any questions? Okay, Commissioner Awald, item eighteen, I believe is a water item as well, it's a waiver.
Yeah, so item eighteen is a waiver for Milton Caterpillar, who we typically purchase our equipment from and to keep our warranty with them and they're local to do the work necessary on our equipment to make sure it's up and running and, and we don't void any warranty issues by taking it elsewhere.
Questions on this? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Madam President, those are my items.
Thank you. Counselor Paniagua. Counselor. All righty, we'll go to Counselor Carney and come back to Counselor Paniagua.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Hold on, hold on.
Counselor Paniagua.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Yes. Oh, okay. So I'm sorry.
Counselor. We're going to move on to Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President, I, I have items twenty through twenty-five. I don't know.
Counselor Paniagua, we moved on to Counselor Carney, I'll come back to you. So if you can mute yourself, please. Thanks. Counselor Carney.
Okay, so I, I have item, items twenty through twenty-five. I believe that we're going to withdraw twenty-one through twenty-five. I don't know if Commissioner Fave's on here to speak to that, if that's correct. I believe twenty is the only one that we're moving today.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't know if you, twenty, you want to just walk through, you know, what that is for some of the folks that may not have been at the committee meeting.
So I do, I apologize, I don't know that Steve Harris is on this call right now. So I don't have specific details, but basically this is an annual reimbursement from National Grid that we get annually for they, they plant trees in city right of way. I really don't know a lot of details about this, I apologize. But I can, I can have Steve Harris report on it. Basically, we're accepting a payment from National Grid in the amount of $20,300.
Okay, yep, yeah, it's my understanding, $50 a tree and however many that they planted through their work. So, okay, I don't know, does anyone have any questions on that item? If not, I mean, if you do, I guess we'll have to wait for Monday to ask Steve. I, I'm gonna call that ready if there aren't any further questions or anything that can get answered on Monday. And twenty-one through twenty-five is withdrawn and those are my items.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Paniagua.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we just received legislation just a few minutes ago on item for the Temporary Retirement Incentive Program. We haven't shared that with the council yet. Should I proceed or should we wait for Monday? I can still present the item if you wish.
Have you had a committee meeting on it?
Um, yes, yes, we did.
Okay.
So go ahead.
If you feel it's ready.
Yep. So the Temporary Retirement Incentive Program are for eligible people from eighty-five, employees from eighty-five years of age and up, ten years of service or more. Fifty-five. Yes, that's what I think. Fifty-five. No, 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 fifty-five, fifty-five. Year, ten years of service in the city or more. The package will consist of considerations. And number one, one-time bonus payment, $5,000. Freeze on retirement healthcare premiums to current levels. A choice to defer pension payments until normal retirement age or another time of employees choosing. A normal terminal leave payouts consistent with collective bargaining agreements and city practices. Employees will have 45 days to respond. And if, if someone is not eligible at the time of announcement, but they are eligible between the announcement and December, they, they will also be considered. Regardless of when they, in which month the early retirement will apply, they will have to respond within the 45 day. And the city savings, financial scenarios were shared. Pointing time, there are 210 employees that are eligible. The projection to assume a 50% accepting. So that would be around 105 employees to accept. And provided the city will need to rehire 50% of that, that would be 53 new hires. There will be a 12-month savings of $2,921,000 plus and 24-month savings of $6 million plus. There is. Yes. I'm sorry. So the item, we, we just received the legislation. I think we should give ourselves time to look at that and call it ready on the Monday meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna hold it until Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Hudson, can we ask questions on this item at all? Maybe Frank can fill this in because I'm a little unclear on it. I'm specifically unclear that we were, you know, the finance. I'm, I'm glad you took our, some of our advice from the Financial Contingency Committee, Frank. So, so I mean, when we're, do, do we have, do we have, finally have a number of people who are eligible for this? Frank?
I think Commissioner, is Commissioner O'Connor on? He's got the, I think he's got the model right in front of him.
Yeah, this is Brad O'Connor, Commissioner of Finance. The final eligibility left was 210 employees.
Okay. And, you know, I just think, and I'm assuming here that there'll be a template as far as rehires go, meaning hiring to fill any of these positions. You'll leave some open, I imagine. And you, if you do fill these positions, you'll fill them at the lowest pay grade. So we do have some sort of savings? I'm just assuming that.
This is Frank Caliva, yes, Counselor, we'll, we'll do exactly as you described. Our present hiring workflow allows us to review every one of those requests to fill and we'll be managing it exactly as you described.
And so the, I mean, the freeze as far as retirement healthcare premiums, that's till they hit 65, obviously, and have to go on Medicare, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what about the state? Did the state end up passing that Earl Retirement Incentive? And are we going to be aligned with them at all?
They have not passed it. The rumors about the second floor's support continue to run rampant. And depending on who you listen to, it's, they're either all for it or totally against it.
Your second floor support, you're talking about the governor's office?
The governor and the budget office, yes.
Okay.
So there is no official word from Albany. Our, the, the one caution I provide is that the documents on our program preclude anyone participating in both. So if you accept ours, you can't accept the state.
I, I just wanted, with the long history of the city, I just, I, I feel that we maybe would need a template. It'd be nice to see a template, how, how you plan to fill these positions or if you plan not to fill any of them. Once, this is all, when all these people avail themselves of retirement benefits.
And, and we'll do that review when we see the, the list of folks who subscribe to the program, absolutely.
I'm just asking this, if you go back to the fact, when you mentioned that the new city hires from Disney, I can't think of a better background for somebody to go to work for the city than Disney. So that's why I'm asking these questions. That's all I got, thanks, President.
So we'll, we'll hold up the item until.
All righty, and if anyone has any more questions on that, I would urge them to reach out to Frank or the Commissioner of Finance to get some clarification before. Thank you, Counselor. All righty, Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President, I have items twenty-six through thirty-one. They are all fire items. They are all fire items.
Okay, hold on, it's the Counselor, please.
I'll talk to him.
Thank you.
Good, before, before we get too far from, um, the pension one, could I just ask one clarifying point? I talked to Brad earlier and, uh, it seems like one of the things is of the people who accept it, which positions will we have to replace? Because in order to save any money, we have to actually keep some of them empty. So of the two hundred and ten positions on the list, can we proactively go through and identify all the ones that we have to replace and all the ones that we don't think we'd have to replace? Because essentially, we have to offer to buy them all out, but if most of them are like deemed essential, you know, if you can't, I don't want you people to come back and be like, oops, it was actually seventy percent of the people who accepted, um, are, were essential, so we have to hire back seventy percent. Because eventually it won't make sense because, um, we're gonna, well, to some extent, we're gonna be paying insurance for basically two, two employees instead of one, because we're gonna pay for the person who's leaving. I think this is the way it works, and we're gonna pay for a new person. So the savings have to be greater than that by quite a bit, which I think it should be, but I do think we need a plan. I think we should know what percentage of the two hundred and ten we would replace and which ones we would, would and which ones we wouldn't.
Uh, so to, to, to your question, absolutely, and, um, uh, the, the Human Resources Department and Commissioner O'Connor have provided department heads with those lists so that they can begin to review them and, um, uh, set that priority. We have asked them that question and we can accelerate their response on that.
I personally think you should accelerate the response before any vote on this, because otherwise, um, it might not, you know, it depends. It's, it's great if it's more than half that are not essential, but if more, more than half are, then it becomes trouble, more challenging.
And Counselor Rudd, I asked that, uh, when we had the committee meeting and and the response I got was that the, the, um, employees, for, for them to even accept it, we have to vote on it first. That's what they said.
Understand that, but there's a file, for instance, in the, the model that Brad was looking at, they, they, Frank and Brad shared with me, it has the two hundred and ten names, the position, the department and all of that. I don't think it should take too long for somebody to go, oh, yeah, if that person left, I would need to hire somebody new, or, oh, if that person left, I wouldn't need to hire somebody new. Like, that's gonna be that hard to do.
I agree, if that's what, I, I would prefer it being done like that, so I, I'm with you on that.
To your second question, um, uh, Counselor Rudd, um, the, it's a little bit tricky around the, the health benefits. Are we paying for two sets of health benefits? Yes. We conceivably would be doing that anyways if someone was retirement-eligible, we'd still, because we have a retirement, um, health plan, we'd be paying for their health care anyways. We may be doing it for a, to your point, a slightly longer period of time because they're leaving retirement early and wouldn't be eligible for, um, the federal program until age sixty-five. So there is a, there is a probably an overlap there, depending on how old the employee is, uh, when they take the early package, how many, uh, additional years we can pay.
So I totally accept that that calculation's a little wonky and I'll take your best shot at that, but then I do think that other part, identifying each one critical, replace or not replace right now, would, is really important.
Agreed.
Not old, Frank, but aged.
I'm, I'm sorry, thank you, President Hudson, I apologize.
Alrighty, are we all set, Counselor Rudd?
Madam President, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, like I said, I have item twenty-six, two thirty-one, and they are all fire item. Uh, Chief Man, are you are around?
Uh, yes, Counselor Majoke, I am on. Hello, everybody.
All right, let's, let's go from twenty-six until then.
Okay, um, all my items, my six items are all sole source vendor items. I'm requesting permission to use the vendor, um, number twenty-six is, um, each of our fire apparatus, they have, um, mobile data terminals, um, they're computers that we get information from, the nine-one-one center. And we're just asking to, um, use, uh, the vendor of advanced electronic design, uh, to not to exceed thirty thousand dollars to buy new terminals, um, to up, um, to keep our terminals updated and for software and all the different items related to keeping these running. We use these on every alarm that we go on. Does anybody have any questions on number twenty-six? Um, number twenty-seven, um, asking, um, to be able to spend fifteen thousand dollars, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, um, for an air cleaning system, um, that we have in all of our fire stations. And this is to be able to buy the parts as these, uh, as a system breaks down and be able to, um, buy parts and, um, equipment to keep this, uh, system up and running. And, um, just to get a little bit more specific, every time a fire truck goes in and out of, of the fire station, um, this system captures all the exhaust and it, um, keeps the, uh, cancerous smoke from, um, just lingering in the firehouse. So this system captures all that smoke. Um, does anybody have any, uh, questions on that? Okay, um, number twenty-eight, um, this is, uh, this is an item, um, we have fire, some of our fire engines are made by, um, Emergency One. Uh, we need parts and equipment to, uh, fix our apparatus when they break, and we're just asking to be able to spend up to eighty thousand dollars for this next fiscal year to buy parts as needed as, uh, breakdowns occur. Uh, number twenty-nine is the same type of request as for our bigger ladder trucks. Uh, we're asking to spend not over thirty thousand dollars, um, to the authorized dealer for our ladder fire trucks. Does anybody have any questions on twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
I, I just have a comment, Chief, I don't have a question, but I just want to ask that, since you're coming and it's saying not to exceed amounts, is there a way from, from this, from now on, for me? If you can tell us where we were, fell in with the not to exceed.
Um, just to give you a report of how much money we spent, is, is that what you're asking?
If you say not to exceed thirty thousand, and by the end of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, on those items, you should be able to show us what you went over on and what you didn't go over on.
Sure, I can definitely have that report. We, we have all of our, um, receipts of all the, uh, repairs we had to do. So those are the expected costs of what we are, um, expecting to spend if, uh, we need to repair our items and just to do regular preventive maintenance to keep the fire trucks running. But I can definitely, um, have that information handy on what we spent. Some years will be more than others, it depends on, um, the different failures of the equipment, but I think this money that we're asking for is just so we can fix everything in a timely manner and get it right back in service, but I'll, I'll get that information.
And I understand that, I understand that it may be more than others, but then that's when you'll come back to the council to get it readjusted. But if you have the total cost not to exceed thirty, and just for argument's sake, you come in, uh, next year and you only spent, let's say nineteen thousand of the thirty thousand, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Okay, all right. And so, um, I think the next item, um, is number thirty. Um, this is, this is for an, um, item, um, for our AMCA's rescue system. Um, it's otherwise known to most civilians as the Jaws of Life, they're on our rescue fire truck. Um, and those, that equipment needs to be, um, maintained and if it breaks down, to be able to buy equipment. So I'm asking, um, to be able to spend, um, monies not over five thousand dollars in this fiscal year. Because um, we have, we have, uh, we have two different, um, we have multiple, we have at least probably under a half a dozen systems to, uh, that we u, that we utilize. But they're all out of one station and then we have a backup station of, of our rescue companies on another call. We have another, uh, unit that can respond if there's multiple car accidents at the same time. And typically in the winter time, they, they, they get used pretty frequently. Um, is there any other questions on item thirty?
Can you send us a specific number? I think that's what Madam President is asking specifically, tell us how many you have.
How many you, how many AMCA systems we use?
Yes.
I, I can get that information right now, I just have to run next door if you want it, or do you want me to just give it to you?
Send it, send it, send it through email.
All right, but I would say around five or six, uh, sets of that equipment we have. Number thirty-one, um, is the same thing, um, let me double check. Oh, this is, uh, K, K and E is another type of, of engine that we have, a fire engine that we have, and I'm just asking to be able to buy parts from the authorized dealer who, um, provides the parts to fi, fix those types of fire trucks that we have. That is off to not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And those are all of my items. All of these vendors are vendors that are sole sourced based on the equipment that we have, that they're the only ones that can provide this service to us to fix our equipment.
Counselor, is there any question on all the item? All, everybody's good. If, if, no question, Madam President, all, all the item, I'm ready, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes.
Yes, I, I'm not sure who, who's asking the question.
Later.
Okay, how you doing, Utter Nair?
Good. Thank you, Chief. I sent you the email after you presented last week.
Yes.
You responded in a timely fashion, which I much appreciate and respect, you always do. Um, so were you able to find out anything further?
We were looking through some different, um, procedures and policies and as we were digging into this and I'm meeting with Diane Nasty, we've been reading about this, trying to get the right answer for it, but I should have followed back up with you, let you know we're still looking, but most, I guess the, the answer that I'm gonna come to you with when my email is, most of the equipment that we have, our, our whole, um, operation is, um, to, uh, whether it's COVID, whether it's tuberculosis, like we, our, most of our equipment is geared towards preventing us from being in harm's way when there are, um, illnesses or sicknesses, we have an EMS divisions that we, we respond to the people that are sick. And I know the, the data, uh, mobile units that we have are a specific informa, uh, tool that we're using to help us with the COVID, but pretty much every, all of our tools and equipment help us to fight against COVID. There's not just, it wouldn't be just this one item, I think if we were gonna put this under a COVID, um, analysis to say we should be reimbursed or is there money for it? I could pretty much put all of our tools and equipment because it's all fighting against what we're dealing with now. Um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get more specific information on your specific question.
So what, what was the question, uh?
I, um, the question was, because, um, I, I brought up in our, um, committee meeting that um, these computers that are on the fire trucks, um, nine-one, they dispatch us to the alarms and right now we're actually, if the Anadita County Health Department has specific addresses that they know there are people that are quarantined, have tested positive, and so forth. The nine-one-one center is able to communicate that to our firefighter, so before we arrive, we know that we have to get geared in our PPE. Um, definitely, you know, there's some alarms that we go on and we don't know that the person might be positive until we get there. Um, like nursing homes we go to all the time, but this particular, all of our computers weren't able to get information if the nine-one-one center has that information. So, um, um, Counselor Maroon was asking, um, since it's underneath the COVID and some, um, expenses are being reimbursed under COVID, would this particular item or the money we're using for these terminals be able to be reimbursed? And as I was looking into that question, I realized all of our gear we wear, um, most of the items that we're using, it's a part of our everyday nature to deal with these types of situations. I know everybody's dealing with COVID, but even when COVID, hopefully this ends soon, our whole being is to, uh, fight against these types of illnesses and issues that are going on in the community. So we have hazardous things that we deal with all the time and, um, I think our equipment is, that's why we have the fire department and the equipment to be able to battle those things. And so I could put a lot of items under this category besides the terminals. So we're just trying to figure out if we can get reimbursed, I believe that's.
Chief, Chief and Auditor, this is Frank Caliba. We're, uh, it's a timely question, the team is on a call with FEMA right now, um, getting that specific question, um, answered. And, um, I think the early indications from the text messages that I'm getting is that FEMA is being exceedingly restrictive on what they will allow, but we'll know more once that call's over and we get a full report. But the, uh, the text messages I've been getting for the last half an hour are a little bit disconcerting, but we'll see.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. And, um, President Hudson, if I may, can I ask another, one other question on a previous item?
Sure.
And thank you, Chief, for promoting me to a counselor. Again, I, I love that role and I appreciate that. No, that's fine, absolutely. So, uh, if Corey is still on or Commissioner Ray Wall, I, you know, I'm, I'm in total agreement with Counselor Hudson, President Hudson. Uh, I lived through many renditions of various software packages. And at the introduction of the, um, and, and Corey, you don't have to fall on the sword, we all try to do different things in, in the best interest of the city. So the IPS didn't work, but we tried it. But my question is, is the same, um, that I asked ten years ago when IPS was being introduced. What is the, the equipment requirement with this city works and what is the training that's going to be provided? Uh, because those are, uh, as I'm sure Corey, you recall, it was very difficult in the codes department to get the, the, the department personnel to buy into utilizing the equipment, which might have been some of the hiccups in terms of the, of, of the benefits of the IPS system. So is there in this new, um, rendition of this, or this new, um, um, program, is there training provided for our city employees? And, and how thorough is that identified as well as what's the equipment? Because you also recall, probably as acutely as the rest of us, the idea of using tablets and the, um, and the printers and, and getting to the point where we could avoid, uh, the nail part of the nail and more, uh, or not avoid it, but to, uh, enhance the ability for the inspectors to utilize technology when they were doing an inspection, really never materialized. Um, so is there something identified in that? And I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't seen the contract or the proposal, so I'm, I'm asking these questions out of ignorance.
Nader, if you don't mind, I can actually jump in and probably answer a lot of that. Um, so first, I mean, that's the reason we're extending the contract is because there is training provided with it and they weren't able to come up and do the training because of COVID and they were, the train is from out of state. So that is something that's part of it. Uh, it is, it's a software program, right? So it's a little different than, um, you know, some of the others, uh, previous IPS things. So it really is just implementation of an actual software. Um, I'll defer, I don't know that there's tablets associated with it necessarily. Um, I gotta defer on that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Um, I know Joe has, has, uh, jumped off, I think he had another meeting, but I do know that he has been ordering, um, um, iPads and upgrading some of the flip phones that some of our staff still has to, um, to iPhones so that they can communicate in the field. It's a little bit different than code enforcement because obviously the water department is, doesn't have the complication of, you know, issuing tickets in the field and, and try, so it's, it's not quite apples to apples, but it's, but obviously the equipment concerns are still the same. So I know that, that Joe has been ordering that equipment and although it feels like yesterday, um, ten years ago, tablets were still, you know, somewhat relatively new technology, um, iPads, I don't think were quite as ubiquitous as they are now. And so they're much easier for us to procure. Um, Joe's been working really closely with the county because there have been a number of delays in him trying to order the equipment via COVID, but county purchasing has been really helpful in, in identifying who those vendors are that have the equipment readily available so that the inspectors, so that the water staff has in their hands the equipment that they need when they're being trained, which having lived through IPS and code enforcement was, was one of the challenges we faced at the time. So, um, definitely, you know, obviously well-founded concerns and we're definitely making sure that we've learned from the IPS experience and not, and, and improving and, and avoiding some of the same pitfalls. And, and Joe can certainly, you know, if, if there is additional interest in it, Joe loves talking about the CMMS program and so I have no doubt that he would be happy to engage with anybody. And so I have no doubt that he would be happy to engage with anybody on the way that, that, that this is rolling out. And also, just with his professional background, this is something that he's very well-versed in. And so he has a lot of experience in these types of software conversions. And so he can, you know, like I said, he would love to talk to anybody about it in further detail. I hope that's helpful, Counselor. I mean, I did it myself. And what could I say? I know the fifth district counselor now, too. Thank you, Auditor Maroon, for the question. I hope I was helpful in answering it.
You were, and, and thank you. And so I just have one other, if I may. So Frank, we've talked before relative to our audit of Band-Aid box. And so when Chief Monz introduced the sole source items, as well as any other waiver items, have these all been vetted? I know we're working on, I spoke with Bianca today, but are these items being vetted before they're coming to the council's agenda?
So any contract, not, not prior to the, I'm coming to the county, to the, to the agenda, Auditor. Once they go to contract, the vendor is required to sign an affidavit that they are in compliance with the ordinance, but it is not vetted prior to that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll talk further with you about that offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item 32. And this item, they aren't asking for anything additional as far as money, just time due to the delays from COVID. Owen is on the line briefly, if you want to just give your spill, and I'm cool with that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Allen. Owen Kearney with the City's Planning Division. This, as Counselor Allen mentioned, this is simply a contract extension request with our rezone consultant. They have about 10% of that contract remaining. This is a request not to increase the amount of the contract, but to extend the end date into early next year. We intend to reintroduce this project to all of you. You'll recall earlier this year, we started the New York State Environmental Review with you, went through the scoping process. We are, essentially, our next step is to continue that. We have been working on this project over the past few months, discussing some policy issues that came up during those initial public meetings. And again, we intend to reintroduce this to you in the coming weeks. And we're asking, we'd like to continue working with Kick Clarion on that. And this is, again, simply an extension to their contract with no increase in the amount of the contract.
Okay. All right, so.
Counselor Allen, can I just have a quick question?
Counselor Green, yeah, go ahead.
So Owen, I know we've talked about this, I know you've been working hard on it for a while. And I think I'll just repeat what I said to you, which is, you know, this is something that the city's been working on since I joined the council two and a half years ago. And it's been a few months away from being done, that entire time. So I just really want to reiterate that I think it's important to bring this to a conclusion. I think rezone's an awesome thing that would benefit the city in a lot of ways. And the delay has kind of held back, in my opinion, some positive changes to neighborhoods. So just want to really, you know, hope that we can get this done quickly because I do think it, it's not perfect. No one's ever gonna agree 100%, but in general, it'd be a positive change. So we should just move it forward.
And people across the whole city are missing out on having chickens.
Counselors, I, I agree with both of your points. We do look forward to reintroducing this. This is a high priority of the administration's, and we're gonna work with you to get it over the finish line.
Nobody wants chickens, right? No chickens, no pork.
Counselor Allen, I want to thank Owen for doing such a great job on this, holding up the line and making sure this happens. So thank you, Owen.
It's a team effort, and we appreciate your support, and we're gonna work with you to finish it up.
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, President Hudson.
Thank you, Counselor. And I think our city clerk has some items.
Yes, Madam President. At the direction of President Protem Bay, we have advanced two waivers of special permits for the Monday agenda. They're of a timely nature, and therefore, they've been approved by Counselor Bay and his committee to go forward on the waiver agenda.
Okay.
I emailed them to you, and they will appear on the agenda. I want to make sure everybody knew.
President Hudson, these are the two items I discussed with you. And I'd like to thank you and Counselor Bay and the city clerk and Heather Lamandola, and also the members of the Economic Development Committee. These are two items that are very important for the Second Council District, two business people. As we discussed in these perilous times, we're trying to give them a little help.
And I agree with you, Counselor Hogan, because right now, anything we can do to keep and retain business in our city, and if we help them along, we need the tax base. So thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, so, city clerk, we don't have to, they'll be on Monday's agenda, correct?
Yes, it's, it's, yes, I'm just making sure everybody's aware of it today, since we know about it today. So yes, it'll appear on the short title in the waiver agenda on Monday.
Thank you. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Well, I got one more. This, Counselor Hudson, this is Dave Proak. I have item number 12. It's my IT's capital request to Counselor Rudd, and I would like to pull that request.
We've done that already.
Oh, sorry, I thought I had a, I've never pulled a request before, so I thought I had to do something special.
Nope, someone else pulled it for us.
Can you turn your camera on, put one leg up in the air and dance around?
I've been hopping the whole time. Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry.
Maybe we can pull the chicken in the mix.
That's right.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, have a great afternoon.
You, too. Thanks, President.
Can somebody say chicken?